Evening, welcome to the Tuesday, December 2nd, 2014, meeting of the planning board. I would like to call the meeting to order. Would the pledge allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unironied, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we'll start with a roll call of members present. Mike Caprulio, chairman.
Tom Young, vice chair.
Bob Curtis, member.
Michael Crowder, clerk.
Russell Blanchett, member.
Jason Garrett, member.
Absent this evening is Kevin Bork. Okay. Set of meeting with public input, open the meeting for public input. See you none, we'll close for public input. The first item on the agenda is the impact fee discussion. And I think we have a couple items to go through and decide if we eventually want to put this to public hearing for the next meeting. So, we would like us to begin with the...
Well, the first question that Jen wanted everybody to review tonight, if you look at your one-page impact fee schedule, the first column on the left, use category, there's two options there under residential. One would assess fees based on structure type, say, single detached, townhouse, two-family, multifamily, manufactured. That would be option A. The option B would be looking at assessments based on square foot. So that's the first decision that you need to make. And in her opinion, she said that the... Really doesn't make that big of a difference when she actually looked at it. She said, "The average cost per residential unit is based on the average housing unit. The net revenue to the town should be about equal under either, as the average housing unit considers the proportion of all housing types in town. Generally speaking, single-family homes will yield the larger impact. Single-family homes generally are larger than other structures yielding a higher fee per home regardless of the methodology type." So, in her opinion, it was mostly up to the board based on just the logistics and how you wanted to be able to track the impact fees, which would be easier. But from an assessment standpoint, she didn't think one would yield significantly higher fees than the other.
Any comments or discussion?
I'm sorry, what's the... We're talking about the...
Yeah, the impact fee schedule, town and facilities, 24 update, 2014.
Whether we want to assess per dwelling unit or per square foot.
Whether they're gonna go by square footage or by the units.
I thought we did do that with Mr. Mayberry was here. And I thought we decided square foot, right?
Yeah, that's what...
Yeah.
That was the consensus of the board at that time.
Is that still the case, or are there any questions, or...
I don't think it matters either way, but I'm good to go with you.
It comes up basically the same.
Yeah, I'm good to go with you on.
I think square foot is more consistent with what we've been doing as a town, right?
Right.
That's what we had earlier.
Okay.
Square foot it is.
Do we need to vote on it, or does it matter?
Do we need an official vote for that?
I don't think so.
No, I think we... I think we decided a couple meetings ago, anyway.
Yeah. As long as, I suppose, we record it. That way, we know that somewhere in the minute decides that we consensus it.
Sure, can't hurt, so I would take a motion.
So move.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, abstained. Motion carries 600 to use square foot.
And the only reason I did is because someone later might say, well, you know, you might challenge that and say, "No, this is official, this is how we..."
Doesn't take much to vote, so, yeah.
Sure.
Alright, so that's the fee table.
Okay, and then the second piece tonight that she wanted everyone to look at were the four different options for recreation. And you can see them on this one-page summary. And the background detail for these options appears in this Litchfield impact fee update, their draft report, starting on page 28.
So the four pa... the four items for rec are under the one-page document?
Um... So...
Yes, they're right there, 1, 2, 3, 4, on the small print.
On the...
Oh, on the... we're still on the fee schedule.
Yep, on the fee schedule, sorry.
Yep.
There's recreation 1, 2, 3, and 4, and they correspond in your report to tables 15, 17, 19, and 21. And the fees vary based on the assessment assumptions.
And I think our last meeting, someone was gonna reach out to rec regarding, was it for fields, and he was, Mr. Mayberry was gonna look at, my memory escapes me, there was something he was gonna look at for recreation. I know the bike path, we told him, is now in place, all the way up minus what may eventually connect to 102. And I think he was gonna back that out from the numbers.
He was looking for the total length of that, I believe, and how many fields.
Of Albuquerque.
How many fields the rec has. Different kind of fields.
Do we know if there's any communication back from them regarding that?
I saw that they were, or he did send an email to them. I sent them an email over the weekend, and John Bryant thought he would make it tonight, but wasn't sure.
I think from, my initial look just at the numbers even from last time was that the rec seemed very high. But that was before he was backing out what was Albuquerque, because I think the bike path fee did not have that as finished. And the only piece that would have to be extended for any kind of bike path would be if you punch it out to 102 eventually, if that ever gets developed.
Well, and this is kind of the conversation we're having is, I don't know if I'm comfortable or why we would even need to decide that right now based upon the fact that a CIP is being developed now. So whether or not we want to capture all that, I'm not sure why even a point to choose between 1, 2, 3, or 4, because it may completely change.
Do we have to have one of those four chosen in order to have this go to public hearing to ballot, or is that completely separate because that's the fee schedule?
Oh, that's a good question. Um...
Seems to me it's more of a matter of policy. What do we believe the vision should be, that the CIP will then fund to address for needs? And that comes, you know, out of master plan or out of other sources of reference that are cited here in these tables.
Now, one thing Jen did say too was that you could pick and choose between these options. So, option 1, for example, has baseball and softball fields standards used 1.1, and option 2 has baseball and softball field standard used .95. You could swap in and out from option to option as well, and create your own menu here.
Yeah, but the thing is, because the gym is involved in this, we have no idea whether the CIP is gonna go for that or not.
Well, that's more of a master plan sort of a wish list item than a CIP. A gym is a much larger focus area.
Still, we have no idea yet what's gonna be done.
And maybe it's just because I don't know Russ, but...
So, if the committee that meets and the... Board of Selectmen decide, right? You know, this is what we're looking to have in our CIP. Do the impact fees not apply to that thereafter? In other words, this has to go then and match what it is that was developed, correct?
My understanding is that the impact fees go to fund whatever the portion of that development is related to new population in town or new development in town.
Well, but the two are interconnected, though.
They are interconnected, but there are some...
I think Jason says you have to match one for one for what is put in there.
I don't believe we do, no.
Is that what you're saying? Do you have to have that exact match?
That's what I'm saying, and it's one of ignorance is not known, is all it is. Because I am, I'm getting the impression, and maybe wrongly so, that impact fees grant or for to deal with growth, but that's what the CIP tends to manage, is that growth and how to shape your town. So, as they develop where they'd like to develop this town through growth, that the two should align. Granted, it might not be, you know, exclusive in that way, but that...
But a CIP goes over and beyond just the results of growth, and it's the investment plan for the community at large, not just as a result of growth, but as a result of desired outcomes based on master plan inputs, community desires.
So if we choose one here that says it doesn't have a gym, and the CIP has a gym, how do we offset that discrepancy?
Cage match.
Well, that's...
Well, the thing is, I don't think that would affect that much.
I don't have a good answer. You can sell tickets, they can pay for the gym. There we go.
If the gym is built due to an increase
Then they use it.
in a square population,
Yep.
it's affected by the impact fees. If it's just to have the gym there,
So in other words...
it's not covered by it.
And again, that's, this is why I'm being educated. So you're saying then that we could be, via the CIP, choose to build a gym, but it's not due to growth, so impact fees wouldn't apply.
Right.
But we'd still build a gym because that's what the town chose to do. But we wouldn't have collected impact fees for it. So if we don't collect impact fees for a gym, but we want to build one, and it's due to growth, we'll not be able to fund it?
If it, if that, if the, if by the time they decide to finally build it, there's an influx of students, I think it would be collectible under the impact fees.
Careful, students are school district responsible. Even though we chose one, we chose not to collect for it. Because you get, it's...
So why delineate it?
At that time.
That's a very good point. Why then even discuss it? Why not just set it?
Recreation Committee.
Well, we're setting a standard in our impact fees document in the zoning ordinance. We're setting a, let's see. Existing average per thousand population, existing need, there's various columns in here. Looking at table 15, recreation facility cost per capita, alternative standards with gym and paid bike path excluded, option 1. Scrolling down through these, there are a lot of scenarios that we can pick and choose from as far as, you know, we... Desired outcome per thousand of population, and then where do we stand on having that currently developed? Are we one-to-one with the population existing currently and the desired recreation facilities existing currently? If we are, no deficit exists. Any future growth could offset the future needs to be built. If we have a deficit, then impact fees wouldn't be the appropriate mechanism to fund filling that deficit. But they could be used, if we don't have a deficit of facilities, the impact fees could be used to build an anticipation of future growth to have the capacity in place. If we expect, you know, a whole bunch of development of a whole bunch of houses that are gonna have future basketball stars, we want to build a nice gymnasium to house them. We could do that, float a bond, or whatever mechanism makes sense at the time. And then the impact fees would be recouped for that.
Right. Totally understand that, but I guess, and again, to Mike's point, then why even delineate it if we can use it to offset?
Without standards, we don't have much of a basis to collect impact fees.
No, but rec would be the standard.
Just a general recreation budget.
General rec.
And allow recreation to choose their destiny.
Just like police and fire, why don't we say, police cars, building, or firefight truck, you know, this type of equipment, that type of equipment? Why are we delineating in the rec field rather than just have rec?
That's a very good question, and I don't know the answer. It's probably somewhere in Mr. Mayberry's justification for developing these tables. And I haven't had an opportunity to read closely into that yet.
And that's, and my reading into it is because of exactly what are these notes are. In other words, are we going to include, you know, and as the price goes up, you can see he includes more things.
Yeah.
So, my basic reading of it without him to ask the question is, here's the, an example of, in rec 1, an example of a lesser desire, you know, 2 is better, 3, 4, 4 means full, maybe full funding. But again, I just, I'm lacking for the, for the, why in the rec department and not in police, fire, town office and say, "Well, we're not anticipating anything in town office, why collect?" Or, "Why is it that high?" You know, or police, does that mean replacing the full fleet and/or a new jailhouse? Or fire, a whole new station, new trucks, where? It doesn't, it's not that granular for these other ones, but it is for rec, why? You know, and I know we don't have that answer here, it's just, it causes me to wonder, you know. Without knowing.
Why is it specific?
That's a very good point.
Do you know what there's a reason why why that one department would be so detailed?
I'm not sure, I'm trying to look quickly back and see if there's anything in the report.
Do you know any legal reason why? I don't see whether the legal reason why rec is different from police. You think police and town offices would be more stringently allocated than recreation?
I'm not...
I think it would be the opposite.
Right, and that's the point, is if we're setting a standard or whatnot for these, we should be then. I would use the same argument for police, fire, and town office then, you know, I mean, why?
Yeah, library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we just use these as reference material and just have a general recreation impact fee amount, but not allocate it specifically towards anything?
Well, what's the town's desire for amenities for recreation?
We don't know.
That's the, that's the CIP, isn't it?
I think more than CIP, that's recreation or master plan, yeah.
Is this supposed to be, is this discussion to have anything to do with master plan, but master plan's a completely different animal, so?
And a bit out of date, too. It's something we should revisit in the near future is a master plan revision, but that's not for, not for discussion tonight. That's a huge animal.
Wasn't Mr. Mayberry trying to, didn't he have a standard for population and how many fields you should have, et cetera? That's why he was looking at how many we already have?
And the tables included in his report include those sources of reference and what their recommendations as reference guidelines are.
But I would imagine that police and fire have the same kind of guidelines.
Yeah, I would expect so.
You know, if you have X number of people, or this type of mix, or, you know, if you have this mix versus a commercial mix, you should have, you know, the standard for fire protect, you know, fire is this, I would imagine, but...
Do you know?
There are, if you look earlier in that report, there, um, table 8 shows police department impact fees. Looks like it breaks it out. Some specifics. Seems like he uses similar standards.
School, whole different one?
Yes.
It wouldn't be just another column.
It was done in the first half. The phase 1. I mean, he has his summary method where he says new police station, two fire stations, fire rescue, but he doesn't...
Break it up.
No, I don't see where he actually goes as deep as it was for recreation.
I mean, because realistically, you know, with older fire equipment that we have with the lack of a fire station, you'd think he would have... Alright, new fire station, fully funding of, you know, new fire station, new trucks, new fire station, new, you know.
Right.
Just kind of like what he did.
Well, that's a lot of CIP more appropriately functioning to define and fund that.
Then would rec?
Okay, you got me.
I'm just saying, that's why I'm playing devil's advocate better.
The ball fields do fall under the CIP.
Yep.
Okay.
The athletic fields do fall under that. The gym, the gym...
As just a general recreation, or is it targeted funding from the CIP as well?
Right now, it's whatever
Whatever they choose.
The CIP says, "This is what we're going to need." Right now, we have a deficit of five fields, according to the master plan. That's what these are trying to figure out. And you're going from 200 and some odd dollars per capita to 700 per capita. That's what he wants to know. Which, where do you go, low, medium, or high?
Right.
Oh, so it's not this individual specific amounts, but just the philosophy?
It's just, if you're going to the full thing with finishing Albuquerque side, the bike trail, and a new gym and everything else, that's one. If you want to do it without the new gym, that's a separate one.
But even within the low, medium, high, she said that we can pick and choose between those, so really it's...
Right, and then it has to go back and...
No, no, I understand, but at that point, it becomes almost arbitrary, and that's why I'm...
Well, it is, the whole thing is arbitrary.
Well, and that's the point, is, then I'm not sure why we're just doing it to rec. I mean, because, and again, if we're getting a brand-new philosophy through the CIP, you know, in other words, this is where, you know, forget where and who's deciding that. The point is, is if this is the direction that town is going in, in my opinion, we should be funding that, and everybody should be locked up with that. Otherwise, we end up with offsetting priorities and nothing gets done. Or you end up turning back impact fees because the stuff you collected for, you don't do it because it's not a priority. So in other words, the Board of Selectmen are looking at different priorities. We're collecting impact fees for something that's not a priority for them. You end up turning them back in.
But again, the schedule's gonna be redone next year with the CIP, so why do we need to decide tonight the impact fee schedule if it's not gonna be affected by the public hearing? Or is it tied into it?
I would think you'd have the schedule as part of the public hearing. I know we're doing a public hearing in Wilton this month, and the schedule is a piece of it. So, I wouldn't think you'd want to go to public hearing without the schedule in place.
But the schedule will adjust yearly where what gets approved is the one-time.
Well, wait a minute, the schedule goes to the selectmen for approval, like you had said. So I don't think the schedule's going to be ready for public hearing.
Plus, there is a schedule right now.
There is a schedule, right.
So, the point is, is that, you know, something still exists right now that if someone is to develop, they'd be paying on that schedule, so it's not like...
Right, because you're still working on the impact fees. The hearing is just to combine the two ordinances into one.
Right, and then if that gets approved by the voters in March, then we need to have a schedule in place to support that through August when we report to the selectmen what the new schedule will be. I think it's August we have to report that up, and then the selectmen approve whatever the changes to the schedule are. Or the CIP would come to us or to the selectmen with their proposed changes to the schedule.
No, the CIP wouldn't change the schedule. The, you mean the impact fee schedule?
The impact fee schedule, yeah.
No, the CIP wouldn't change the impact fee schedule.
Well, their funding priorities would drive that.
Well, the planning board would go through it, look, and just by year.
Right.
Right, I...
I thought the impact fee study was what was gonna...
Right, the impact fee study.
Drive fee schedule.
The impact fee study that we have before us, if we do enact the zoning ordinance changes to harmonize the impact fees into one instead of the two separate that we have now, we'd have to have some sort of a fee schedule to work with that once it becomes law.
Can they use the same schedule now, but with a combined? All we're doing is combining two different documents into one, but can it refer to the same fee schedule that we have currently?
I'm not sure if the categories would line up.
Isn't that automatically adjusted, like whatever's passed by?
Because wouldn't you still have a school impact fee and a municipal?
It's just under one document.
The schedules would stay the same.
I think so, too.
Just sort of two documents, it's one document.
So...
One zoning document.
It's one zoning ordinance versus two.
Right.
And here's another little tidbit I'm gonna throw out there. So let's just say we adopt rec 1, right? Now, we have a document that we just approved that says, "Costs exclude bike paths and new gym." I could then argue that said, "No, no, 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 no." They just voted on something that excludes a new gym.
Right.
But what if we want a new gym? You see what I'm saying, because...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, you're opening up a...
Right, so the CIP, they have to mesh the CIP and impact fee charge.
So how do you mesh it when the CIP doesn't exist yet?
Yeah.
Well, there is an existing CIP, but it's outdated.
But it's not.
It's being revised.
I think the cart's just a little ahead of the horse.
Yeah.
Just a little.
I think the...
Or feels that way.
I think the rec part of it, I don't know how you feel, but I'd say take a happy medium for what the price range is.
I'd say we have one now. What does it matter until we get a, why we? Does, is it so important that we change the figures at this point in time before the CIP? Or, we, I mean, because we have one, it can't be that much different than what it is now. The problem is, I don't think it's delineated in the rec thing like that. And if, as an example, I'd love to have someone here from rec hear this, because, again, if we choose one that says, "No new gym," and they're looking to new, a new gym, I'd be like, "Hey, wait a minute, wait a minute."
What are their priorities?
Yeah. We don't even know what they are.
And the CIP team that's currently going through the process, where are they at in the process?
And taking input from the town and taking input from departments, you know, and these are the priorities. I'd hate to hamstring someone because of something we just don't know about.
And I'd hate to have the wrong answer in the public hearing and have everyone come forward and just tell us how awful it is.
Yeah.
Because we didn't put the effort into getting it right.
Well, Joan, what have you seen from rec? I haven't seen emails.
They're having a meeting.
Only that John Bryant would try to attend, but...
But there wasn't any, I, okay.
Not weather input, no.
And no matter what, the impact fee schedule can't go to public hearing without the selectmen blessing it, right? So, talking about this this evening for the 16th meeting doesn't help us at all, because we can't do anything with it anyway.
There's a facilities meeting Wednesday in here.
Town or school facilities?
The town one.
Oh, good.
I put, I added it to the thing.
Is that part of the CIP discussion?
Yeah, yeah.
Good.
Yeah. So, tomorrow. So I got it, and we'll be recording it, and I got someone in here to do that.
So it'll be live on channel 22?
Live.
My understanding of the CIP, my understanding has always been that it's sort of a, almost like an advisory document, or some kind of...
Blueprint.
Blueprint, or roadmap, or something that kind of guides you into fitting in certain different scenarios, if you want to call them, in terms of the impact fee scheduling.
When I recall that, if a major item came in and it wasn't on the CIP, the selectmen shouldn't approve it.
That's right. When you go reading all, when you go read all the documents in the state, if you haven't highlighted it as a need, not supposed to approve that.
And the CIP meeting tomorrow night is a field meeting.
Right.
It's not, it's not in...
Oh, it's not here?
No, it's a field meeting.
You got portable cameras?
Yeah.
Where are they going?
Police station.
Huh? That's right here.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no meeting in the, no formal meeting in the room. It's a field, field, like last, last month, we were at the garage and transfer station. Next month, we'll be at the fire station. It's basically fat-finding at the present time.
So Joan, do you see any reason why we can't in the 16th have a public hearing just with the two zoning ordinances combining into one and not discuss the impact schedule at all?
Right, right.
You don't see any reason why we can't do that?
No, I don't see any reason why. That's what Jen had left.
That's the purpose of the public hearing, anyway, is just for the zoning ordinance.
Jen had put a big index of what was combining, and then the new 16th.
So why don't we table the impact fee schedule until rec has a chance to speak? And maybe we don't do anything at all with it, we would just keep going with what we have, but I think it's too early to to approve it.
Do we want to push on?
And if the selectmen, I know Kevin couldn't make it this evening, but maybe find out from the selectmen what they want from us.
And what their schedule is.
You know, what is their wish for the schedule?
The ticking clock does give us a little more time.
Yeah, we have, we can do it in January.
So if we're not comfortable moving forward with this at the December 16th meeting, we could do this at a future meeting.
Yeah, it's just the first public hearing.
Okay.
Correct me if I'm wrong, we get the second public hearing in January.
Right.
Okay.
So we don't have to, it's just a public hearing for input, we don't have to do anything official then if we don't want to.
And if we do something official where we make significant changes to whatever it is we're bringing forward.
We have to have a second public hearing.
We have the optional second hearing. Okay, good.
And I think it was planned to have a second public hearing.
Yeah, I think Jen just wanted the initial one done in December, just to have it out there.
Well, I may have misspoke to you. If you already have a fee schedule in place, you can change your impact fee ordinance without updating this.
Yeah, we have a schedule for years.
So, you could still
Change your ordinance.
Combine your ordinances at town meeting and worry about updating this at a later date.
I wasn't sure if we had to present an entire package at town meeting.
No, if you didn't have a fee schedule in place, it would be good to do those together. But no, we already have one in place, the ordinance change can occur.
And Mr. Mayberry's information could be used by the CIP, by anyone else through the process, as now it gets wasted money or wasted work around his side. It's just, it's great information, but I don't think we need to do anything with it right now.
And it gives them, it gives the committee and the Board of Selectmen an idea of what the footing will need to look like with different chunks, right? They'll say, you know, based upon, you know, "What would it really cost us if we added all this?" Well, there it is, right there.
I assume the CIP group has a copy of Mr. Mayberry's reports?
I do.
I would assume.
I have it.
But does the whole, does the whole CIP team see it?
I believe Jason has it too, doesn't he? Yeah.
He must have it, right?
Jason, yeah, we both have it.
Yeah, it'd be a good idea, Tom, when they're discussing, let's say, the rec part, right? That's it, you know, if we want the whole ball of wax, that's the big number there. And that's what it looks like.
Do we have to, um...
Okay, so we all agree to, I don't know if we had to vote on it, but I think we just pulled off on this.
And we will be sitting down with the rec committee as well.
Right.
Good, as part of, like we do with the, everybody else, to find out what their intentions are, and what they, what they want, what they need, What they can live without.
Good.
All right, so are we in agreement to table the table right now?
Yes.
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 And I don't think we need an official vote on that. It's just more of a discussion area because nothing's going to go forward anyway.
Sure.
Okay, um, from what was done on the impact fee, the second draft by Mr. Mayberry. I don't know if you had a chance to review it, um...
The third draft?
Well, the phase two draft, I guess, maybe.
Part two, third draft?
Um, if there's any thoughts, changes, questions back to Mr. Mayberry. I know he had another meeting this evening, so he couldn't attend, but I know he said if we had anything to send back to him, we could.
Well, what's funny is, you know, we had, just had this discussion and I think he says it the same way here. It says, "A new CIP is under development and expected to be completed in 2015. The CIP may define a new series of long-term improvements in cost assumptions related to facility development needs. Upon completion of the CIP, the impact fee model should be reviewed and modified accordingly to best reflect the improvements likely to be funded by the town."
Maybe we should have done this first.
Yeah, right. We went to the wrong document first.
Did it backwards.
He, he, he makes that exact point.
Yep, which makes sense. Was there, were there any questions in any parts of the document? I know you said we could email him back any questions we had. I thought it was pretty straightforward and kind of just carried on with what he did in the first part. And I think he just made some final adjustments to, I mean, I don't think it's tremendously different from the second draft. I don't believe. Comments, questions from Mr. Mayberry in absence? Okay. So next on our list, procedurally, do we just, uh, vote to send it to public hearing or is there any other discussion on these documents that have to be done before we make that motion?
No, I think you can just vote to send the...
Well, what about the table though?
We're just sending the ordinance to public hearing.
Okay.
Not the table.
Not the table.
And if Jen comes back and for some reason we're missing something as to why the table should be involved, then couldn't we add that to the public hearing in January?
Yes.
Yep.
So we have that extra meeting anyway.
And she also mentioned that there's a multifamily overlay that's going to be involved in the December sixteenth hearing as well.
Yep.
Did we already send that to public hearing? I thought we did.
Right, I noticed today for, um, multifamily and the combination of the two impact fees into one.
Have we sent the multifamily to public hearing? Did we vote on that last time? I thought we did, but...
I, yeah, you did. I had it written down.
So that one's done, so we just need to vote for the combined zoning ordinances.
I think...
To send to public hearing.
I think you did that, didn't you?
Yeah, we did. We voted on that to send it.
Yeah, to send it.
So we don't need to vote tonight. Everything's gone forward.
No, just on this.
Okay. A vote on what?
Just on the impact fees to send to public.
No, we, wait, oh, wait a minute. This paper notice went today to combine the two ordinances
Yeah.
Into one.
Yep. And we already voted for that to go to public hearing, the last meeting.
December sixteen.
So we don't have to vote for anything to go to public hearing tonight because we already did it last time.
Right.
For both that and multifamily.
Right.
Okay. So is there anything else we needed to touch on impact fees this evening?
Nope, those are the main issues.
Okay. Was there anything in multifamily that, um, Jen wanted us to go over? I think we're, I mean, pretty much the same as last year.
No, she just wanted you to be aware that the first hearing for that was December sixteenth.
Okay. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda are the minutes from the November eighteenth meeting. People saw anything that needed to be corrected or?
Yeah, here's a minor typo. Page two. Yes, third paragraph. It's like second sentence where it says if there were, it was a financial advantage, it should be, the word there is misspelled.
Also, yeah, also on page one, it'd be being this called water at seven, it should be seven oh four or seven oh five. Because Mike was not here at seven oh four, uh, seven o'clock.
Well, yeah, it has Mike, Mike in parentheses, seven oh four.
Right, but underneath you said he called the meeting to order at seven o'clock.
Above that.
Below that.
Oh, oh, I see.
Called water.
Okay, yeah.
He can't do it before he gets here.
Mike Croto.
It's Mike Croto. I was here from the beginning.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, sorry. Mike C., Michael C.
Yep, so that's fine.
I apologize for that.
Any other comments regarding the minutes? Want to take a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the meeting minutes of, uh, November eighteen, eighteenth as amended.
Second.
Second discussion. All's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstained, carries six zero zero. All right.